Okay, just a moment. All right, go ahead. Okay, hello, everyone. I'm Michael Dever, the Chair of the County Planning Commission, and thank you for joining us today on the April 8, 2021 meeting. If I could, I'll call the meeting to order. Annette, could you do the role, please?
Yes, Mayor Boakes.
Here.
Mayor Brennan.
Here.
Mr. Doyle.
Here.
Mayor Byrne.
Here.
Director Collier. Director Dever.
Here.
Mayor Disico. Mayor Gamala. Mayor Prosec.
Here.
Mayor. Oh. Mayor Sellers. Councilperson Simon.
Councilperson Simon is having trouble finding the Zoom link, so I'm forwarding it to her now.
Wonderful, thank you.
Okay, thank.
You do have a call.
All right, thank you, Annette, I appreciate that. I'd like to read an important notice first. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, the Cuyahoga County Administration Building is closed for public meetings at this time. As a result, this meeting is being conducted remotely in accordance with the State of Ohio House Bill 197. Interested persons may access the meeting via live stream by using the following YouTube link, which I believe is posted on our website. Okay, so thank you, everyone, for joining us today on this beautiful spring day. I think we're close to eighty degrees today, so it's a great day. First thing, we went through our order and roll call. The approval of the minutes from the February 11, 2020 meeting. Can I have a motion on that?
So moved, Mayor Brennan.
Second, Boakes.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any comments or questions from any of the board members? Seeing none? Move to approve?
Just that I'm here, Councilwoman Simon.
All those, welcome, Councilwoman Simon.
Thank you.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, that motion carries. The next is a few resolutions. Mary, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, and thank you all for joining us today. We do have three resolutions that we'll need. Hopefully you had a chance to review those in the board packet. We will be requesting approval of those three resolutions today. And as part of that, we will provide a presentation and updates on those projects that refer to those resolutions, so we can go ahead and we will go through both the Lakefront Public Access Plan. Jim Sonhalter is going to provide an update on that, and then we'll discuss the resolution. Following that, Patrick Hewitt is going to deliver an update on the First Suburb Single Family Zoning Analysis Project, as well as our new data book, the Our Communities, the 2021 Data Book. So we will go through those in segments, and I think this will be a better order. I think last, last board meeting, I put the resolutions first before we had a chance to review the information, so hopefully we fixed it this time around. So, thank you. I will go ahead and turn it over to Jim. I'm gonna stop sharing.
Okay, thanks. Go ahead, Jim.
All right, let me cue this up here. Okay, there we go. Thank you, Mary. Jim Sonhalter, Manager of Planning Services, and also the Project Manager for the Lakefront Public Access Plan, and I'm happy to provide this update on our progress so far. And I don't have to say next. There we go. So this is a very ambitious and aspirational plan, and we are focused on the thirty miles of the Cuyahoga County shoreline. And our project area will include both public and private property, city parks, metro parks, reservations, as well as opportunities to incorporate private property into our planning. And we're really going from the shoreline into the primary right-of-way. So on the east side of the county, that would be Lake Shore Boulevard, and on the west side, that would be Lake Road. So, for focus and detail, we are really concentrating on creating public access where we can, where there are opportunities, and where we have willing partners in doing so. We're going to be addressing shoreline erosion, ecology and habitat, and stormwater management. You know, you think of the county and the number of wastewater districts that we have. There's a lot of coordination for exploring green infrastructure opportunities. And really, when we talk about access, we're incorporating multimodal transit, so it's not just getting to the shoreline parks by car, but active transportation through the recommendations of our Cuyahoga County Greenways Plan, transit, and any, any means we can to get people from the neighborhoods to the shoreline. You'll see here also to the right that we're incorporating a lot of larger plans that are going to have very strong recommendations that will directly affect the outcomes of our work here. The largest certainly is the Regional Lakefront TLCI. It's a three-county effort by Noaka. We have the Cheers Project with City of Cleveland and Cleveland Metro Parks and others. Vision for the Valley, the Cuyahoga River and waterfront. The Cleveland Downtown Connectivity TLCI, and the Community Confluence, which is the partnership with county planning, cities of Lakewood and Rocky River and Cleveland Metro Parks, to really look at the bridges and active transportation to get people from city to city and down into the reservation. There we go. And our goals are very clear. It's a connected network of lakefront access opportunities and assets. And as I said, these assets include private properties, they include public properties, various parks, and public rights-of-way. So we really see this as thirty miles of opportunity to connect people to the lakefront. And it's really, you know, the county, all these communities for decades turned their backs to the lake, and there's just a regional recognition that the lake is really a county-wide asset and an asset to the entire region. We've had major shoreline erosion issues to deal with. We have private property that is under direct threat from erosion that just doesn't stop. And as I said earlier, we're focusing on ecology and habitat, so, oops, sorry. You know, what can we do? What kind of shoreline protection countermeasures will improve water quality and safeguard and enhance habitat for aquatic plants and animals? Outcomes are pretty clear, too. We want to address coastal erosion at scale. It's not a parcel-by-parcel approach. We're looking at groups, you know, whether it's linking existing beach clubs and other private property owners that are in proximity to public parks, for example, where we can create shoreline protection and a public access. So again, it's restoration, recreation, mobility, ecology, all these good things, that there are many public partners who are willing to fund these efforts. Above all, this is all about partnerships and respecting private property rights. It's a big plan, like I said, it's a thirty-mile plan, but we're not pushing recommendations on private property owners who are not willing to participate. The lakefront has been under, you know, we're looking at ninety percent of the lakefront under private property ownership, and there are long histories there, so we have groups that are willing to participate, and others are just saying, we're fine, leave us alone, we'll take care of it, and that's good, too. So where, you know, you think of a thirty-mile vision, it's not a completely linear lakefront or trail along the shoreline. It's going to dip in and out. It'll go down Lake Shore Boulevard, jump into Sims Park in Euclid, go to, you know, come back out, jump in again at North Collinwood, and just keep going all the way across the county. And again, incorporating strong recommendations from the County Greenways Plan, so we're thinking, really thinking through this. Of course, with applying for funding and defining projects, there's a lot of regulatory review, US Army Corps of Engineers, State of Ohio, Ohio Department of Natural Resources. So we're looking, you know, we're getting projects in front of these funders now, so that we can start refining these proposed projects and seeing that, you know, we're doing everything we need to do in a timely way. It's a big process, but it's a fairly short process. We're looking at concluding the study portion of this by the end of June of this year. And you'll see to the left, here we are right now, you know, where we're looking at existing conditions, gauging land, landowner partnership interest, and gaining community perspectives. We've interviewed a lot of public agencies who have interest on the lakefront, so we're trying to get as many people on board as possible, and again, building these partnerships. So where we are really, it's kind of between one and two. We are, you know, we've done our homework, and we are exploring alternatives. We're, you know, reaching out to new potential partners, and again, looking for those opportunities. And at the end of this, you know, again, it's a thirty-mile vision, but we really hope to have very focused plans in very specific areas that we can get into detailed planning immediately and start seeking out the proper funders to implement those plans. There's a lot that goes into the current conditions, coastal conditions, you know, what the lakefront really looks like, where it's, where lakefront protection has been eroded and sliding into the lake. We're looking at access and mobility, land ownership, all of these things on the list. We've had a number of public meetings. We started off with two lakefront property owner meetings, and east side and west side, just, you know, sticking to tradition in the county. And each of those meetings, we presented the project, followed up with a survey, and found that, you know, we're, we're getting good interest, good, strong interest. You'll see number three of all the responses we got, they're seventy percent positive. People are willing to consider public access in exchange for shoreline protection. So that starts to bring private property owners to the table. Again, after decades of, you know, traditional beach club ownership, et cetera, people are saying, you know, this, where there are serious issues with erosion, and we really can't afford to take care of this on our own. So, and again, looking at these conditions and the survey responses, there are folks that are in serious danger of losing more property and losing their buildings. And again, we see number five, we've gathered a number of participants here. Trying to stay within my ten minutes. There's so much to talk about.
I know, so much.
We also had a public meeting that was very well attended, also had a follow-up survey. So people are saying, yes, this is a good idea. We love these connections, Lakewood Park to Edgewater Park, so long connections through neighborhoods. Edgewater Park to Wendy Park, again, private property owners, public property owners, and making good connections. So we've had a good survey response and a number of participants here. And here's where we're really getting into the nitty-gritty, the granular. We're talking about sediment erosion, can't help it. So we're breaking these thirty miles into very distinct and discreet segments for further analysis. We've looked at potential trail segments with a number of different criteria for public access, and starting to identify initial focus areas and how we can really create the optimal public access points in there. And again, we're looking to reach back out to our steering committee. We're tentatively looking at late April to gather again and discuss what we've come up with so far. And at the same time, you know, building partnership, partnerships, looking at the lay of the land and everything, we're also seeking out partners and funding. This is a big year for federal transportation bills, various earmarks, so we've been working with the county executive and his team of lobbyists and our consultants to put together just cut sheets, what this project is all about. Here are the high points. Here's where we need our help, or need your help. We're also, we also have an immediate opportunity with the Ohio Department of Natural Resources, this erosion, erosion emergency assistant grant application. This just came to us two days ago, so we're following up now with Smith Group to start putting everything in place, so we can submit everything in a timely way. There are a lot of opportunities to fund projects like this. We really look to the city of Euclid and the funding that they were able to attract. We know it's a long process, but you just have to be very focused, and you'll see, you know, you can get funding for mobility, recreation, resilience, shoreline enhancement, on down the list, from federal, state, and local sources. So we're leaving no funding stone unturned here. So next steps, and the subject of our resolutions in front of you today, it's continuing our relationship with Smith Group. Like I said, the study part of this plan will be done the end of June, that we need more assistance from them for the funding strategy and grant support, as we're reaching out and engaging more partners. That means more meetings, more surveys, and just really pulling things together, and then getting into the detailed mobility planning and design support just in the big scale and also in various focus areas. And also, they've proven that they're very adept, very skilled at attracting state and federal funding, so we're enlisting their help with state and federal funding applications. So with that, that concludes my presentation, and I am happy to answer any questions.
I appreciate. I know that was, that was a lot in ten minutes, thank you.
Was it really ten? Wow, thanks.
I don't know, I wasn't keeping track.
Mary? Can I interrupt to say Mayor Sellers has joined us?
Okay, welcome, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
So if I could, then I'd like to just jump in, and obviously, the County Public Works Department is is very much engaged in this entire process and our relationship with county planning and the Smith Group. So this is an important initiative for Cuyahoga County, and as Jim has outlined, there's a lot of work to be done here. At the same time, we're, we're mindful of, you know, there, there's potential funding opportunities coming very shortly through the federal transportation, well, from Washington. So we're mindful, we're keeping an eye on that. As one of numerous projects that Public Works takes on, this is just another one of those. I have a statutory responsibility, or should I say the county does, for roads and bridges also, for the bridges here in Cuyahoga County. So that is a focal point of County Public Works, but this is just another initiative that we believe is, is significant for the region, for Cuyahoga County. So we're really excited about this, and we think this is the best way for us to advance the goal of creating more public access to the lakefront. So I look forward to, hopefully, the support to move this item forward, and then we'll have further discussion, obviously, with our colleagues over here at County Council on this major initiative.
Thank you, Michael. Yeah, and I think this is important. There's twofold things happening here. So what you just heard with Jim, as he's mentioned, the planning process is, will be wrapping up by the, you know, the, the June timeframe. What we've seen is, again, with that collaboration and having agreements of property owners that are willing to partner with us, you start seeing these areas that come to an area of interest, and those are what we want to take a look at and really get to know them better versus the whole thirty miles, as Jim mentioned earlier. And so the Resolution Number 210408-A, that is specifically for the modification of the contract with Public Works and Smith Group for the lakefront potential additional planning services as part of this next step in the process. And so the modification extends both the Smith Group's contract and county planning's contract through the, through December 31, 2022, just to make sure we have enough time and, you know, allotted for this to go through the process it requires. It provides an additional $300,000 from Public Works, $250,000 of that would be for Smith Group, and $50,000 of that would be for county planning. We look at this as really, Smith Group is going to be doing a lot of that additional planning services, design, support. We look to say that we will be at county planning, running point on those funding applications with support from Smith Group. I do see that Mayor Prosec's got his hand up, so go ahead, Mayor.
Thank you. I would like to make the motion, but is it proper to do further discussion, or do you need a sponsor in a second before discussion?
That's, that's fine, Mayor. I appreciate you bringing that up. So maybe the motion, it sounds like you made the motion, and if there's a second, then we can, and then we can go into further discussion. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Second, Simon.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
For your support.
Okay, is there further discussion from members? Mayor Prosec, do you want to, did you have something further to bring up besides the, the motion?
Yes, I, I'm just curious, Jim. In, in these discussions, when I hear intermodal transportation, do we ever have any input or anything from the Cuyahoga Valley Scenic Railroad or RTA? Or are we just looking at pedestrian opportunities to get to the lakefront?
Thank you, Mayor. We've cast a wide net of stakeholders to engage, and we have talked with RTA, because we see them as a big part, especially since they're running a lot of service down Lake Road and Lake Shore Boulevard, and that's just east-west. We have a lot of north-south connections as well. So it's our goal to move people from neighborhoods to the lakefront by all modes of transportation, but we're really focusing heavily on bicycle and pedestrian, active transportation improvements that can occur on those main roads, as well as several county roads in the study area. I can't say that we've engaged the Cuyahoga Valley Scenic Railroad, but it's a great point, and I think that, you know, as they extend their service and how they connect to the tow path, it's just a natural to promote this type of planning through organizations like that, because, you know, it would, through that, it would be really easy to bring people up from the Akronet area through the tow path and land them in downtown Cleveland, and they can go wherever they need to from there.
And I would agree, and I would just add to that, you know, again, this, this east-west connection and these amenities to include for access, it's just as important for these north-south connections that lead to the lakefront, because again, we're talking about providing access to people who currently don't have it or don't have an easy way to get there. And so, you know, as we get these areas of interest, we will be even more engaged with RTA. The metro parks has been very engaged, and so the collaboration among the parties, I mean, working with Public Works and seeing where they have projects already planned, looking at the Cuyahoga Greenways Project, the plan to figure out where those critical gaps are and how we connect those to the lakefront. It's, it's been, you know, tremendous effort of trying to make sure we include all, but again, I don't think we haven't invited the, I know, I just sat on a call with the National Parks about some of their access plans that they're trying to get input for, so that's, that's a very good point to get them engaged in this as well.
Well, it, it's difficult, again, because the, the ownership of the tracks and stuff, but again, keep in mind that those tracks we, we could be bringing people up from as far south as New Philadelphia, and one of the most successful programs with the Cuyahoga Valley Scenic Railroad is the, is the bike riders who get back to their cars on the train and stuff. So, again, it's still my passion to try and see that, that at some point, figure out how it can, how it can work, that's all. But thank.
That's great.
Thanks, Jim.
Yeah, that's great input. We appreciate that. Thank you. And now we have a to-do, Jim. Another to-do.
I just have a question. Oh, sure. Sunny. Um, yeah, I'd love this. Um, you know, I was able to watch what happened in Euclid from its inception and be, you know, at the helm, but they had one point of contact, basically, with it was the city, their planner and their economic development director. So our planning commission, would you say, is the lead agency, point agency or public works, or it's just joint? I mean, who would you consider really the, the agency from A to Z and, and the point?
Yeah, when we've had public meetings, we've pushed, we've, when we've had public meetings or property owner meetings, we've listed Jim as the point person for that contact. I do believe the project team, and we've got, you know, Nicole English, Eric Mack, Mike Dever, myself, Jim, Patrick, Micah. I mean, there's a lot of us that when any email goes out, we're trying to make sure we're copying each other on that, so we're staying engaged, but in terms of public in, I believe, you know, we've really tried to put Jim as point on that as a contact person.
So, great, great, Jim. Yeah, so you think from A to Z, Jim's at least will have consistency and envision that through the whole project. Awesome. And just, just a quick question to Jim about the, the streets in Euclid, you know, Sunny Cliff and all the streets have they table for, for these public meetings?
I'm sorry, I lost your connection for a second.
Hey, Jim.
Could you repeat the question?
Just wondered if those beach streets, beach club streets in Euclid have been engaged in, in what the response is, you know, the Sunny Cliff and those other streets.
We extended the invitation to those, to everyone on the east side, for example, for the Lakefront Property Owners Meeting. So folks have remained engaged. I've gotten email response, inquiries from folks in Noble Beach, Sunny Cliff, that area, as well as further west on Edge Cliff. So, you know, some supportive, some saying, you don't need my beach club. In, in full disclosure, and that's fine. Again, we're looking for partnerships with folks who are willing, and you know, in the, with the Euclid example, you had all of the beach clubs further east that had severe erosion issues. So they had a lot, had a lot more to lose than shoreline and, and a lot to gain. And I think, you know, we, we did include representative from those beach clubs, along with Allison Lucas-Lee Love, in our east and west side presentations, just so they could, you know, tell that personal story about, you know, how the process came about, how they could get people on board, and as well as, you know, addressing skeptics or people who really were not sure they wanted to participate. But I, I think the results now really speak for themselves, and the project just continues to go east.
It's amazing. Okay, thank you. Thanks, Commission Jim.
Thanks. Is there other questions or comments from members of, of the commission? I'm not seeing anything. Okay, so on the motion, I'm not sure if we need a voice vote, or a voice vote is enough, Annette? So on the motion to approve, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those against? Okay, that motion carries. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next item, Mary?
Yes, the next item is also related to the lakefront. This is Resolution Number 210408-B. If some of you are very familiar, there was a TLCI project that was the Community Confluence Project. County Planning held the contract with OHM Advisors for that work, and this, this resolution is for contract modification for additional professional consulting services to support the Community Confluence TLCI plan to extend professional consulting services, self-planted by planning and technical services that will be provided by county planning, as well as preliminary engineering for recommended bicycle and pedestrian improvements for the segment of Lake Road between West Clifton Boulevard in Lakewood and the Marion Ramp in Rocky River, as well as the Lake Road Bridge Crossing the Rocky River. So again, thinking of that project, that final report has been submitted. We have the existing contract with OHM Advisors, and this resolution is to extend that modify that contract to extend the OHM contract with county planning through December 31, 2022, and provides $200,000 of additional funding from Public Works to county planning to support that work of OHM. So again, this is now taking recommendations that came out of the Community Confluence Plan and doing that additional work on an area, as an area of interest for additional funding, preliminary design, and taking that to the next level.
Yeah, I thank you, Mary. I appreciate that. And as Mary has laid out, this is just a continuation. Now we have a, a specific project that we believe could capture some funding in the very near future, be it through earmarks and/or through a transportation bill. So we're positioning ourselves once again, is to get most of this planning work completed so that we are in the ideal position to be able to go after these projects. It's cooperation with the two cities, obviously, Lakewood and Rocky River, to, to bring about this effort, but this is a great, one of those low-hanging fruit opportunities that we believe we can advance forward with the overall lakefront plan. So with that being said, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve this resolution.
So moved, Simon.
Second. Sellers.
Okay, thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Is there further comments or questions from members?
Mayor Boakes has her hand raised.
I, I apologize. I think I have a hand up. I have.
You're clapping, you're waving.
I, I apologize. That's the first time I've ever done that.
That's okay.
A year's worth of Zoom. Something to, to add, I'm the Chair of Planning and Programming for Noaka, and on tomorrow's agenda, there have been several projects recommended for TLCI planning grants, as well as TLCI implementation grants. And this project in Rocky River, surrounding the Marion ramps, has been recommended for some TLCI funding at around $95,000. So that, that has, you know, just arrived at our doorstep. Now that will be, if it is recommended by the committee, it will go to Noaka's Board in June, funds available July 1. So obviously, we'll want to coordinate together since that money has been secured. So just wanted to offer that.
Terrific. Yes, we are, we are not going to attack the Marion Ramp. It's the endpoint.
We'll attack it for you.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks. Mayor Brennan, I think you had a question or comment. I'm sorry.
No, I didn't. I inadvertently signaled. I'm good. Thank you.
No, no worries. Thanks. Is there any other comments or questions from members of the committee? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. Mary?
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so we will now hear from, uh, Patrick Hewitt on the First Suburbs, uh, Single Family Zoning Analysis. And, uh, we will then discuss the resolution related to that, and then have a, a brief overview of the 2021 data book.
Mary, I will go ahead and share my screen.
Thank you.
Can everybody see that?
Sure can.
Yes.
Okay, so, um, resolution number 210408-C is the Northeast Ohio First Suburbs Consortium Contract. We're requesting the approval of a professional planning services agreement with, uh, the First Suburbs to prepare a single-family zoning analysis, and this is Phase One. The single-family zoning analysis is an attempt to identify deficiencies in single-family zoning regulations in entering suburban communities. Uh, and this can take a number of forms, looking at setbacks, minimum lot sizes, height restrictions, and approval processes to make sure that, uh, zoning within our first suburb communities, uh, is effective and efficient in getting new housing built. They both, you know, a quick process for developers, but also achieving the goals of our communities. The image to the right is an example from one of our communities here, uh, in Cuyahoga County, a first suburb community. You can actually see in the top of the image a vacant lot there, for whatever reason, maybe a home was demolished or never built. But we're going to look at the home in the middle as an example of why this is kind of necessary. Uh, this particular house, uh, highlighted in blue and lot highlighted in green, uh, has an existing lot size of 5,200 square feet. Uh, if this were to go away, it needed to be rebuilt for some reason. Zoning requires a 7,000 square foot lot. The existing lot width is 40 feet, required by zoning is 60 feet, and the existing side yard is two feet, and required by zoning would be three feet. So if this house were to go away and the exact home were, uh, want, wanted to be built, uh, a variance would be needed, or the home design would have to change. So that's really what's, what this project is attempting to address. In Phase One, we'll be initiating the project and reviewing kind of existing housing trends across the county. We'll also be looking to identify, review, and categorize zoning districts. So looking at the regulations within the zoning districts of those first suburbs communities. We'll then look at existing single-family lots and compare them to the regulations to see those instances in which lots and regulations don't align. And then look at single-family infill opportunities, so those places where new housing could be built on some of those existing lots before closing out the project. The resolution that you're looking at today, uh, only covers Phase One of what is intended to be a four-phase project. The first phase is that review and analysis. Future phases would include a best practices manual and outreach to developers and communities. Phase Three would include actual code updates for a small subset of those first suburbs communities that are intended to be characteristic of other communities as well. And Phase Four would include metrics and ongoing tracking to see how well, uh, infill housing is doing and how our code updates in Phase Three would affect ongoing infill housing. The financial impact of this, it's a six-month timeframe for completion, and will bring $35,000 in revenue to County Planning. Uh, that's from the First Suburbs Consortium, who is partnering with the Cuyahoga County Land Bank for this project. Continued partnership with First Suburbs would, uh, be important to continue future phases of, uh, this project. I will pause there and stop sharing my screen so that we can have any discussion.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Thank you. Thanks for doing this. Um, we've been talking about this for a while. I wanted to, to ask if you are including, um, sustainable practices as a model for, for the First Suburbs and, and this project, including permeable pavement, solar panels, um, all those types of things that people are looking to do. Is that something that's in there now, or can we, um, perhaps add that?
The initial contract, uh, includes generally a regulation review of kind of the existing regulations around housing and setbacks. Certain things are absolutely going to fall on that when we think about sustainability, and that includes things like permeable pavers, but it also will include the amount of parking, uh, that is required, thinking about transit, uh, friendly communities, that sort of thing. The second phase, the best practices, is really when a number of those items would come into play. So what are the ways, even as we're building infill single-family housing, that we can reduce runoff, for instance, as a component of, of, uh, sustainability? So that, that second phase is where a number of those items would come into play more.
Okay, so it's contemplated.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, is there further questions or comments?
Hey, Patrick, Brendan, Brendan Doyle here. Um, which, uh, suburbs are included in this, uh, Phase One Analysis?
Yeah, it's going to be the members of the First Suburbs Consortium, uh, since we are contracting with them. So the list, I believe it's 19, is available on the First Suburbs website.
So it's, it's all of the, all of the members of the consortium?
Yes, we're working directly with First Suburbs, so, uh, with the First Suburbs Consortium. Uh, so they are going to be our main point of contact, and then further outreach will go from them to the individual communities. So we need to gather things like their zoning code, that sort of thing. It's possible that some communities may not choose to participate, uh, but we're, we're hopeful that all of them will be included in that, uh, that process.
Understood. Okay, thanks, Patrick.
Okay, uh, can I have a motion on the resolution?
Sure, Simon. So moved. Second votes.
Okay, thank you. Is there further comments or, uh, discussion on the, on the item?
I have to abstain now.
Okay.
Chair of the First Suburbs Consortium, so.
Yeah, I'm wondering if I shouldn't abstain as I'm on First Suburbs Consortium. Maybe, maybe we, maybe we can ask the Law Department to opine on that. Well, Jared?
Yes, Mayor Sellers, for sure. And then Mayor Brennan, what did you say your relationship was? Well, I, I'm on the First Suburbs Consortium. I'm, uh, University Heights is a member, and I attend the meetings. I'm not an officer like, like Mayor Sellers is, but, um, I, I was there for the presentation that, uh, Planning Commission made with respect to this. I don't believe University Heights will be partaking in, in this particular program, although we support it. Uh, we're, we're intending to do a comprehensive zoning update ourselves this year. So, um, I think just for, I, I think if it's all the same, I, I think I'll just abstain just to, uh, ensure that there's not even an appearance.
I think that's the best course as well.
Thank you. I will do that.
Well, then Brooklyn Heights is also a member, and are we going to lose our quorum if I also have to abstain?
Well, we don't lose quorum, do we? I think it's just a matter of, of.
Winning from the vote.
Right, it's a, a simple majority of those that are still present, wouldn't it be?
Jared?
I think, if you have to abstain, are you a member, though? It didn't, whether your city is, are you a member of the board?
No, I am not, I'm.
Then I don't think you would need to abstain.
I think it's just Mayor Sellers.
Okay, does that sound clear? So, um, there's.
Sure. I mean, I'm not a member of the Executive Board, so if that's going to be the criteria.
You're not, if you're not a member of the board, then I don't think you need to abstain, but if you're not on the board.
Mayor Byrne?
Yeah, just real quick, I am a member of the Executive Committee. I wasn't going to abstain. I mean, you tell me.
Things we didn't think about.
Yeah.
So Mayor Brennan, are you in, or are you going to abstain? Well, if we're going to base the criteria on being, um, member of the Executive Committee, I'm not. Mayor Byrne, I know who this Mayor Sellers is, uh, if, if it's going to create an issue about quorum or, or not the appropriate number of positive votes, don't be, I'll subject, I, I'll be happy to vote on this matter.
Well, you can vote. I would, if I was on the Executive Committee, I would not vote.
Okay.
And I would not, if our, Ms. Mayor Sellers, I would not vote either. I think that's.
Okay, so that sounds like now that we've had Mayor Sellers and Mayor Burns, uh, abstain from voting on this item, right?
Correct.
Okay, okay. So with that being said, I'm going to make, uh, the motion has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Those voting no, none, and those abstaining?
Byrne. Sellers.
Okay. All right, is that, uh, Annette, is that good enough for you?
Perfect. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that, everybody.
Thank you. I'll give it back to you, Patrick.
Thank you so much. Is everybody able to see my screen again?
Yes.
Perfect. Uh, just a short presentation on another piece of work that we recently completed. You will recognize the Our Communities, uh, Data Book. We produced a, uh, the first iteration last year in 2020. We now have the second in this annual series of data books, the Our Communities 2021 Data Book, which provides insights into the communities that comprise our county. The purpose of the book is to assist communities like yourself in understanding metrics and applying for grants and loans with this data. We are providing recent data in what we like to think is an accessible format and updating it regularly, that is annually. The 2021 Data Book has 39 metrics. It covers five topic areas, demographics, economy, housing, land use, and transportation. There are three new metrics this year, and all of these data sets are available in six geographies, uh, to compare the state of Ohio with the five-county Cleveland metro area, Cuyahoga County, our individual communities. And then we have aggregated those communities for our inner-ring suburbs and outer-ring suburbs. There are, like I said, are three new metrics. One of the most important ones that we think is internet access, which is just an example of what PDF of the data book looks like. Internet access needed to, uh, access the internet areas, places where internet access, uh, is more widely available and lighter areas where internet access, specifically broadband internet, is less available. Uh, so just an example of the different places throughout the county where that's taking place.
It was funny, Patrick, soon as you went through that, you started going in and out.
I saw my internet was unstable.
I thought that was for effect.
I am in one of the middle areas, so I guess, uh, maybe that's, that's the cause there. We also have an interactive online version, if you do have internet access, uh, of the data book. It's now available on our website. This is newer than the PDF version, uh, and this is the same data sets, but it's interactive. So you can view and make comparisons. You can click around and get more information. All of this is available on our website, countyplanning.us/databook. Special thanks to everybody that we worked with, especially a number of folks on staff, uh, in putting this together. Uh, we are working on another data book, which is our region, the 2021 data book, looking at the Cleveland region as it compares to places like Detroit and Indianapolis on a whole host of, uh, even more metrics than what we're looking in our communities.
I would just like to echo the thank you, a big thank you to Patrick and the team, uh, last year being the first release of the, this product and then doing it this year. And I think they have done a tremendous job on, uh, improving some of the things where they, you know, felt they could do it better this year, and again, putting those new key data points in there, they, they've really done a tremendous job. And I think this, this, uh, data book looks really great. So thank you, Patrick, and to the rest of the team. A lot of graphic help with our GIS folks and a lot of our interns. Everyone was involved, so it's really a, a great effort out of, out of the team.
Okay, thank you. It's been a short year because, Patrick, I remember when you did this presentation just last year. It's, I can't believe a full year is, has gone by since then.
It has been eight months. I'm gonna, I'm gonna admit that. So we were a little behind in the first one. We've gotten far more efficient. Our hope is to begin releasing this in the first quarter of every year going forward.
Really appreciate it. It's great work. Any comments or questions from members of the committee? None. Okay, thank you very much. All right, Mary, uh, do we have another Executive Director's Report?
I have my report. Thank you very much. Um, so it's hard to believe it's second quarter, being here in this, this group since January. It, the time has flown by. Um, you know, we finally got staff photos taken. They will be posted on our website. So it was one thing that I, you know, all of your photos were on there, which was terrific, and then said, what, where are the staff photos? They weren't there. So we've just had those taken. Those can be published. So I think that's really exciting to put the face with the names, especially when we're, uh, still doing a lot of things remote. Uh, as related to what Patrick just said, the data book has been released. We issued a press release with, uh, County. Uh, we had an Idea Stream interview today with Sound of Ideas with Brooke Jackson. Patrick and I did that interview this morning. Uh, Idea Stream really, they were, we had a little bit of a soft launch to them. They reached out about some middle neighborhoods, uh, work that they were doing, and we let them know about the data book coming out. And so that is published, I believe, we're going to put it on our website. So, uh, that was great to get some, um, media time this morning for that. Uh, just this week, too, we released our 2021 Healthy Tree Canopy Grants. They were announced this week. And I'd happy to announce that this is resulting, uh, in the planting of 4,000 trees when this will all be said and done, which is obviously the goal of this program. Uh, 25 out of the 40 applications will receive funding. There were five tree planting and planting projects and 20 tree planting projects and one startup of a county tree nursery. So again, as we look through, um, you know, what this program entails, it, it, this is about, you know, the planting of the trees, the planning of the planting of the trees, and then the maintenance of those trees. And so, um, you know, although we'd love to fund everybody, that, that's just, uh, we can't, we can't do with the funds that we have. So we're trying to make the best use of those funds. Um, so I think that's going to be really exciting. Again, lessons learned from the 2019 program. We did not have a program last year due to COVID. Uh, so I think there's a lot more, uh, the forms will be easier, reimbursement process will be easier. There is a webinar next week, uh, for all those that will receive funding to make sure that, uh, we can go through things a little smoother this time around than we did in 2019. Uh, also, we're working to define the parameters of our annual planning grants. Uh, a lot of the projects that we took on in 2019, 2020 were delayed due to COVID. Uh, so some of those are still going, so we've got a little bit of staff capacity issues on that. So thinking about what that might look like in terms of how we support our communities going forward this year. Again, with the data book, the First Suburbs work, there's still a lot of great work going on. So we may narrow the scope of what those planning grants look like this year, and but will we make sure that we, uh, you know, have those conversations with you and get your support on, on what those might look like going into next year? I definitely don't want to open up for any and all, and then we disappoint, you know, too many communities that we can't support them. So we'll be talking further about that. Uh, in addition, I'm keeping up with my kudos corner. I'm happy to report that the Cuyahoga Greenways Plan has recently been featured as one of five transportation case studies that embodies the American Society of Landscape Architects Smart Policies for a Changing Climate. So that is a great, again, notoriety, um, visibility on the work that's been done with the Cuyahoga Greenways Plan. And so wanted to make sure that you are aware of that. Uh, I'm not sure if we put that on our website, but we can follow up with a, a link to that story, uh, as well. And I also want to say a big congratulations to Patrick on our team. Um, we opened up a posting for a manager position on our team. Uh, we really, I've looked at kind of the responsibilities that the team had and wanting to make sure that we're being as efficient and productive as we possibly can, at the same time looking for, you know, us needing to go after additional work. And so we are, uh, I'm happy to announce that Patrick has offered, he's been, um, offered and accepted a promotion, uh, to manager of planning services. So what we look at, and for that, I would just want to say thank you to Patrick and the whole team. This has been a discussion of how we, uh, rebalance some of the workload within the organization. And so Patrick and Jim will both be manager of planning services with a little bit of different strategy on, um, going after additional work. And then Nicole Laird and Rachel Novak on our team will shift from Jim's team over to Patrick's team. So Patrick will have Nicole and, um, Rachel on his team. And I think it's really going to help with, uh, Jim has had a significant workload, trying to, um, manage all those people and review all the documents that need to go out. And so I, I still see these teams working very closely together, uh, on projects, so it should be seamless to our clients. But I think this is going to be a great, uh, transition for Patrick, uh, especially coming out of an interim director position and, and his leadership he's shown since he's been here. So excited to share that news with you. So that was just, um, made official today. Fiscal updates, uh, wanted to let you know that we have extended the contract with the County Department of Public, uh, Safety and Justice Services. There's still a 3,000, a little over $3,000 balance that we have remaining from our original contract. Um, but they have asked that we extend that contract, uh, for additional services if, if they need us. Um, so that has now been finalized. Um, IT has been an issue since I've started in this, uh, position as well to figure out what we have, what we need, especially given the remote workforce. Um, we have decided to place an order for three new laptops to replace some of our 2014 equipment. Um, and so what we had to do is make a request that a line item in our budget gets moved from one place to another to make sure we can, uh, pay for those laptops coming in. So that is going before council, um, on April thirteenth meeting. So it's not any, not requesting any additional funds, but just real reallocation of our existing budget. Um, and so we'll be doing more of that and looking at that. I know the county is doing assist, uh, countywide, um, IT update. We're not sure what the timing is for that. We still have several other, um, laptops and computers that were refreshed in 2014. So we're looking to replace our oldest first and get those out to the folks who need them most, especially with some of these programs we work in, they're not able to keep up, so, um, more to come on that. And then I think, you know, we might, we talked about our last meeting, the strategy for future funding requests to help strengthen our team, whether it be professional development, merit raises, whatever it may be, understanding that we as county planning are actually generating revenue from the work that we're doing when we contract with communities. And so we had several conversations with the fiscal team and, uh, Jennifer on our team to really try to understand what we could do, and I, I had hoped that we'd be able to maybe say we're gonna hold back some of the money that we, uh, revenues that we generate to help pay for those things, but it doesn't seem like that's gonna be the way that we're able to do it. But what we're, what we're looking at is saying, we do go to council for additional funding, that we make a point of including language to say that this represents a, you know, percentage of the total dollars raised by planning commissions, so that it's not really seen as, um, money that is truly general fund dollars. So I will probably be needing your support to make sure that, um, you know, we can stick with that because I think it's important to make sure we're taking care of this team and, um, giving them opportunities to advance. So I think, I don't know if there's any discussion on that.
Okay, members, is there any, uh, conversation or discussion on, uh, Mary's report? Not seeing any. Okay. All right, thank you, Mary, appreciate it, and congratulations, Patrick.
Thank you very much.
Next, uh, old business, do we have any old business? No, no old business. How about new business? Is there any new business? No. Okay, did we have any comments from the public, Annette? Did anything come in?
No, no comments from the public.
Okay, appreciate it.
If I could just jump in for a minute, I'm sorry, I forgot to include it in here. I did put it at the bottom of our agenda, but we will require a May board meeting. I believe that's May thirteenth because we've got a subdivision, uh, coming in for review from Homestead Township, and we may have a couple other items, but it won't be as, hopefully not as long, uh, as today, but we will require that meeting in May.
Okay, thank you, Mary, appreciate that. Okay, uh, I, I see that we have a solid waste district, uh, board planning and policy committee meeting immediately following. So if there's nothing for, or, uh, additional that needs to be added to today's discussion, I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Pam, Hope's.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Was it against? All right, so this meeting is, uh, closed, so thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. I'm assuming we just drift right into the, uh, Annette, right into the policy and committee meeting? Or the solid waste district? Okay, thank you.
Kevin will bring up their agenda, I believe.
Diane, when you're ready, I'll call roll. Uh, yes, thank you, Annette. All right. Mayor Boats?
She's on mute.
Here, here, sorry.
It's okay. Mayor Brennan?
Here.
Mr. Doyle?
Here.
Mayor Byrne?
Here.
Director Collier? Director Dever?
Here.
Mayor De Seko? Mayor Gamala? Mayor Prosek?
Here.
Mayor Sellers?
Here.
Councilperson Simon?
Uh, this is Khalil Sarin, sitting in for councilperson Simon.
Thank you. And Mr. Mathias? You have a call.
Okay, thank you, Annette, really appreciate it. Uh, first order of business is, uh, the approval of the minutes from the December tenth, or I'm sorry, is it December tenth, 2020, policy committee meeting? Can I have a motion to approve?
Mayor Brennan, so moved.
Second, Hope's.
Okay, thank you. Is there any discussion on the minutes from December tenth? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? That motion passes, thank you. Uh, next, Diane Bickett, uh, district announcements.
Thanks, Michael. Um, so yeah, our agenda today is short. I couldn't retire without seeing you one more time, 'cause, just 'cause. So we put together just a, a short, um, agenda for you today. Uh, but most importantly, I wanted to introduce Beth Biggins-Ramer, our executive, new executive director. Um, Kevin, if you stop screen sharing, then we can all kind of see each other, and hopefully we can see Beth. There she is. So, um, we're very excited to, uh, now introduce Beth to you. She might be familiar to some of you because, um, uh, Beth actually started as a solid waste planner at the Cuyahoga County Planning Commission in, uh, nineteen ninety-eight, and then she worked there for ten years before moving to Arizona, uh, where she was a solid waste manager for the cities of Buckeye and Phoenix. Um, and then she returned home to northeast Ohio and has been the director of the, um, Medina County Solid Waste District since 2014. So, um, with recycling, everything old is new again. I'm not calling you old, Beth, but, um, uh, we're glad to have you return to the district as our new leader. So is there anything you want to say?
Well, thank you very much, I'm very honored. Um, very happy to, to be coming back home, as Diane said. Um, worked for ten years with the district, went out west to learn how solid waste is done out in a very arid environment, came back home, and, um, I'm very excited about, um, trying to, to fill some very big shoes that Diane is leaving behind, but very excited to work with, with the district and, and all of the programs that are currently underway and start some new ones also, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. Well, um, you know, we anticipate a very smooth transition. Um, Beth will be starting on April nineteenth, and I will be retiring on April thirtieth. So there'll be a two-week overlap, um, where Beth can get reacquainted with Cuyahoga County and, um, and with staff, so I think it's all gonna go very well. And, um, so I, you know, you were all, all the planning commission folks and policy committee folks were invited to my retirement party, so I hope you come and help me celebrate. It's gonna be on April twenty-third at the Great Lakes Brewing Tasting Room, so it will, uh, you know, we, we can have masks on, but we can celebrate too and drink, so. If you didn't get an invitation, um, or if you somehow, I know a lot of county folks went in their spam filter, so, um, call, uh, contact Jessica if she knows, and she can forward that to you. Anyway, um, so some other announcements for you. Um, we're gonna be doing one final, not one final, my final trash talk, um, workshop for, uh, service directors and mayors and recycling coordinators on April twenty-eighth at nine-thirty. And, um, we wanna update everybody about our new program offerings and, um, both collection and educational programs, and also provide an update on recycling markets. And there's some really exciting things happening with recycling markets, and I'm glad to be able to, um, kind of transition out while things are good, are getting better after the whole China Sword problems, but, and we'll be talking about that. So I hope you can join us. Uh, Kristy Snyder sent out, um, information about that, and there'll be a follow-up, uh, promotional email about that. And, uh, yeah, as far as other upcoming events, our compost seminars and our bin sales are underway. And we also have quite a few new, um, educational webinars that Karen Miller, our education specialist, is doing on, uh, waste reduction and, um, recycling right. And Doreen is doing a lot of presentations, um, sort of an ask the experts presentations for businesses. So, um, if you have an interest in hosting us in your community, we would, um, love to set something up, so, um, you can contact us for that. All right, um, next on the agenda is, uh, planning updates, and Jessica will be providing those, and then I'll be coming back to, uh, give you some updates on recycling.
Okay. Hello, everyone. So, um, I'm just gonna, it's been a while since we, um, since I went over our, how the district does our, our surveying, uh, process and our data collection. So, um, I'm just gonna give a brief update on, on how we're doing it. Um, so January through June basically is, is the timeframe where we're, um, out there collecting all of our recycling data and, um, and other program information and stuff for the, from the previous year. So in January and February each year is, is when we survey our municipalities and the businesses that are in Cuyahoga County, um, to get that information about the recycling activities. And, um, that data, that is what we use to report to the Ohio EPA and the, our annual district report, which, um, we get a copy to you guys. Um, that's due, that's one that's due on June first. Um, and that report is just so that we can show them that we are meeting our state, uh, state mandated waste reduction and recycling goal of, um, and in particular, the residential commercial sector, uh, recycling goal of twenty-five percent. So, we, um, so for 2020, to gather the data, the program activities and data, uh, recycling data, um, we sent out the 2020 residential recycling report, um, in January to the service directors in the fifty-nine communities. Um, and the, and, and what we are asking for in that, in the residential sector are, are the tonnages for curbside and drop-off recycling programs, um, yard waste collection, uh, for composting, and, uh, any special waste collection programs that they've, they've held throughout the year, like their household hazardous waste, um, their computers, scrap tires, and so forth. Um, and then in, in February, um, later in February, we, uh, send out recycling surveys to businesses. Uh, they're either mailed or, this year they're mailed or emailed. Uh, this year we sent out to three hundred and forty-eight, uh, commercial and institutional businesses and, um, to two hundred and seventy-nine industrial businesses. Um, so we're targeting them, the, the ones that we have on our list, either because they are, we've identified them as a large quantity generator of recyclables, or because our just district's business recycling specialist, Doreen Schreiber, um, had assisted them with, with some, with one of their recycling programs, or they applied for a grant, um, or something of that nature in the past. So, and then each of those businesses, eh, they have the option to either complete our survey on, on paper or through our online survey system, um, which is called Retract Connect. And, um, a, a lot of them have, have switched over to, to doing the online survey system, which is great because then we don't have to use as much paper, um, and postage as well, so. And then finally, the district, uh, sends a recycling activity survey. Um, this year we sent to forty-two facilities that process recyclable materials, um, from the Cuyahoga County municipalities and businesses. Um, and the reason that we do that is because it is, it's, it's very expensive and time-consuming to try to survey every business in Cuyahoga County. Um, there are thousands, as you know. So we use the processor data to kind of bridge the gap, um, to, to get the data that we, that we wouldn't get from all of the, that we would have got from all the business, businesses had we surveyed them. So, um, and we have to make sure that we're not double counting materials. So we, um, have a process that we use to make sure that we're not doing, that, that we're not double counting the recycling data, um, between the generators and the processors. So we only are using the processor survey data that we collect, um, for the commercial sector, so we don't use it, we really don't use it for the residential or the industrial sector. Um, and we only use the commercial processor data if the processor data is greater than the total reported that's reported by the generators for a specific material. So, um, and also that, that tonnage is, the data is, between the commercial sector and the processors is never blended. So, um, it's seemed to have worked for, I can't even think how many years now. Um, and, and that is how we do our surveying. So the other update is, real quick, the Ohio EPA, um, they revised their state solid waste management plan, uh, format. It, uh, it was version four point oh, and now it is version four point one. Um, and the reason that they have done that, and, and let me back up, the plan format is, uh, if, I'm, if you forgot already, that is the, uh, what we use to update our solid waste management plan, uh, that it's a format that's prescribed by the EPA. Um, and so four point, version four point one, um, is just accommodating the changes they made to the waste reduction and recycling goals, um, in the, there, when they updated their plan, their 2020 state solid waste management plan, um, that became effective December first, 2020. And, um, so the districts that, that are, uh, updating their plans after December first of 2020 will be required to use this new format. Um, our district isn't, isn't required to begin preparing our next plan until May of 2023, so, um, that will keep you updated on any changes. There may be, um, some other changes that they, they make to that format. So there could be a version four point two, three, who knows? So, but we will keep you updated. And that is all I have. Is there any questions?
Thank you, Jessica. Are there any questions for Jessica? Her, um, her work is so important to the district because, um, we are essentially a regulated entity, Ohio EPA. All the reporting we do has to be reported to Ohio EPA. We're meeting state goals and, and targets, and, um, you know, a lot of her work is unsung, but I, we really greatly appreciate all of her attention to data. You really have to be a data wonk to, to enjoy this type of work, and, um, she does a great job. And, uh, we may have some challenges in the future, meeting some of our goals because of COVID. Um, but Jessica will make sure we count every, every ton we can find, so, thank you. Okay, just a, a few other updates on some municipal recycling programs. Um, wanted to talk about Cleveland. It, as you know, Cleveland suspended its recycling program, uh, last year uh, due to several factors, um, that we've discussed. One being the material was, uh, that they were collecting citywide was highly contaminated, um, meaning it was more trash than recycling in that material, about sixty-five percent trash. So essentially, that material was too dirty to sort, and they were not able to get, um, a viable recycling contract in place. So, uh, they suspended their program and hired a consultant, GT Environmental. Uh, GT spent the last year essentially, um, analyzing every aspect of their waste recycling program and, uh, produced a two hundred and sixty-seven page report with recommendations and analysis. Um, not gonna review that for you, but I did wanna highlight the changes to the city's recycling program that they're talking about. Um, because I, I guess, you know, with our recycling challenges, it's always good to know, um, you have options. And what Cleveland has chosen, um, to do with its, uh, recycling collection is move to an every-other-week collection program. Um, of commingled recyclables using their carts, which they've had, but it won't be offered to every resident. It's only gonna be offered to residents that opt into the program. Um, so a resident will basically have to subscribe to the program. There might be a cost to that, and they have to sign some type of a recycling pledge that, that they will recycle properly. So, um, in a city the size of Cleveland, I think it makes a whole lot of sense to only offer the service to people who want it. in a city the size of Cleveland, I think it makes a whole lot of sense to only offer the service to people who want it. And for those who don't want to opt in or don't want to pay, if there's a cost, they do plan to open up six, what we call super center recycling sites, which are the, the concept here is that they will be manned drop off sites that will be open to Cleveland residents. And they're, right now they only have one or two drop offs and they're unmanned. So drop off sites tend to be a magnet for garbage, which is why Cleveland used to have drop off sites and they closed them years ago. But with having kind of strategically located super center sites, it could take the curbside materials plus things like household hazardous waste and some of the, you know, tires and some of the other special wastes. It's a great service, not only to residents who don't want to opt in, but also to apartment building residents and, and maybe small businesses. So I think the direction they're moving in is really good. And we look forward to seeing how that's going to play out. The consultant they hired is right now working on an implementation plan. And the city is eager to get that. And once they have that, then they'll, they'll be on their way to bringing recycling back to the city sometime this fall, I think. So their commissioner of waste collection did retire recently. So they have, you know, they have a lot of, a lot of changes coming to the city. But I think it's a good time to kind of pivot and, and, you know, find something and work on something that works for them. So that's good. And the other news about Cleveland is they received a very large grant from the L and B Mark MacArthur Foundation, four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar grant to implement a circular economy roadmap. Kind of a lot of industry speak for how can we use waste as a resource locally to create jobs and improve the environment and become a more sustainable city. So they're working with Cleveland Neighborhood Progress on this project. CMP is actually the entity that applied for the grant funding and received it. And they have just selected a consultant that has done this work, creating these roadmaps in other communities. And I think it's, it's very exciting to see, you know, what, what we can do with this, what ways can be used to kind of regenerate the city. You know, one example is, you know, can we, you know, increase our diversion of organic material to help with the tree planting program or the community gardens? So I think it's going to be interesting to see. The district will, will be involved with this project. I've served on the advisory committee and there will be opportunities to serve going forward for our staff on the steering committee. So you'll probably be hearing more about that. Cleveland Heights, Khalil, maybe you could talk about Cleveland Heights, but they're making an exciting move to an automated system after many, many years of planning and public involvement. They had a very manual system where they had rearload packers and many staff people picking up trash by hand. So they were able to put together a plan to replace their outdated fleet and buy carts for every resident. And they got funding through an Ohio Water Development Authority loan. And they're paying for that by increasing the rate that they charge residents for rubbish removal. So they have a way to pay for it and it's really going to modernize their entire system. So congratulations, Khalil. I know you've been working on that. And the district has been working on that with the city on an education outreach strategy for, for that program. So we're excited to work on that rollout, which I think is October is the goal, October first. And, and then the final thing, we're starting a pilot project with the city of Brooklyn, a cart tagging pilot project. Karen Miller from our staff and Doreen are leading that project. And what a cart tagging project is, is it's very hands-on, walking up and down the street and looking in recycling bins. And if there's the wrong recyclables in the recycling bin or trash, then a tag goes on that cart. That direct feedback to residents that they're doing it wrong or doing it right. So we provided, there was a councilwoman in Brooklyn that contacted us about doing it. And so we structured this project and got them some funding to hire some cart tagging help, that sort of thing. We're doing a pre and post waste sort to show the success of the project, which will happen this summer. And once I think we have assembled our best practices, we will make this grant available to other communities too. So there's a group nationally that is doing a lot of work on this cart tagging stuff, and that's the recycling partnership. And they've demonstrated that this type of direct education with residents at the curb is the most successful way to educate them about how to recycle right. So very excited about that. And that, that's a wrap. So.
Okay. Thank you, Diane.
Thank you.
That's a lot of, a lot of information. Thanks, Diane, Jessica, and obviously welcome, Beth. I'd just like to point out that both councilwoman Simon and I were part of the selection group because as we do serve on the solid waste district board, there was a lot of great applicants and obviously Beth rose to the top very quickly. So we welcome her on as the new director. And obviously it's bittersweet to lose Diane. I think Diane's really done a great job. And as Beth has noted, you know, she's some big shoes to fill into the future. And but we, we think Beth is just the right person to handle that, that task. So thanks again, all of you. I really appreciate it. Okay. If I could, is there any other further discussion from members of the committee? No? Nothing? Okay. If there's nothing further, I'm going to make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
Thanks, Mayor. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye. All right. Thank you, everyone. Thank you. And Diane, we'll see you on the twenty-third, twenty-third.
I hate goodbye, so I'll see you on the twenty-third.
All right.
Sounds good, Diane. Thanks for that.
Bye, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Michael, if you can hear me, can you hear me? I'm going to give you a call. I have a quick question about this legislation we need to do for the Hilliard Bridge.